So it's seven o'clock and we'll call this meeting of the Fairhaven Select Board to order. Let's all stand and say the pledge, please.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Congratulations to everybody who won their election. At this first meeting of the new Fairhaven Select Board, we need to choose a board chair. Do I have any nominations for board chair?
I'll nominate Chris.
I'll second the nomination.
If you're willing.
I'm willing. Thank you.
Any other nominations? Discussion?
No.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
So it's only four, right?
Four to... yes. And we're waiting for Jeff to come on. Jeff's not on yet.
Well, thank you. I appreciate the support. At this point, we need to elect a clerk for the board. Is there a motion for that?
I'd like to nominate Jeff, who's not here. He did such a good job last year.
I'll second it.
Okay, we got a first and a second. Any other nominations?
Thanks, Jeff.
All right, all of those in favor of Jeff as clerk?
Aye.
All right, thank you. At this point, we'll turn it over to Danny, who's going to do the swearing-in of Mayor Murphy. Who looks excited over there.
In person. Who is it?
Who is that masked man?
Just got elected to be the clerk.
Oh, is that what happened?
Jeff, you just got elected as the clerk again.
My clerk? No internet at my house whatsoever.
Really?
I texted Chris, but I couldn't.
I, Murphy, solemnly swear that I will be true and faithful to the state of Vermont and that I will not directly or indirectly do any act or thing injurious to the Constitution or government thereof. So help me God, under pain and penalties of perjury. I don't think he's taking it seriously.
He's not taking it seriously.
Yes, he is.
He says, "I will."
Murphy, you stop. I, Murphy, solemnly do solemnly swear that I will faithfully execute the office of mayor for the state of Vermont and will therein do equal right and justice to all persons to the best of my judgment and ability according to the law. So help me God, under the pain and penalties of perjury.
Is that it?
Not it, Chris.
Not it, no.
Congratulations, Murphy. Can I just ask if you all got your packets on the abatement that I...
There's an abatement board meeting.
Yeah, the 23rd, and I just got the packets out and I put them in the... in your mailboxes. Just want to make sure everyone gets those tonight. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And the police chief did join the meeting. All right, well, thank you, Mayor Murphy, for your second term. Looks like we got a lot of projects planned for this coming year, so thank you. Set day and time for the meetings. Is there any...
Did I ask to have that on there? Because I've been thinking about that. Or you just do that?
It's necessary.
You have to.
I'd like to think about changing the time. I don't know how that works for everybody else. I was thinking something late afternoon. Is that bad for you?
Yeah.
That's probably tough.
All right.
In the summertime, I work till six.
Oh, yeah, you're out doing that. I'm just where... it's silly. Why? I want to go to basketball games in the winter. So maybe when the winter comes, we could... does that have to be for a whole year that we agree to the time?
No, the board can... you guys can change it. We had to notify, but...
Yeah.
Okay.
Maybe start with seven now, and then you can bring it up later.
Right.
Agreed.
Is there a motion for that, to set it?
I'll make the motion that we have the time at seven o'clock and also the same Tuesday, every other Tuesday.
All right. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor of that, setting the day and time for the meetings as Tuesdays, every other Tuesday at 7:00 p.m.? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Re-adopt the board rules. Did everybody get a chance to review those?
I'd make a motion to re-adopt as presented.
All right, is there a second to Jeff's motion?
Second.
Any discussion, any changes needed on him?
Anybody has?
Everybody else had one?
Yep.
All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Motion carries.
We need signature on that.
Everybody or chair?
You're that physician, though.
Am I still? Has been for a long time.
All right, designate the newspaper of record. Is there a motion for that?
Make a motion that we use the Free Press as the newspaper of record.
All right, is there a second?
Second it.
All right, we have a motion and a second to use the Lakes Region Free Press as our paper of record.
That's the same, right, for the record?
Just the same. All in favor of that motion?
Aye.
Motion carries. Amendments to the agenda? I know, I think we have a couple amendments.
Yes, sir. I'd like to add an amendment under New Business to add the review and approval of the Highway Safety Grant.
Is there anything else to add?
Yeah, and under Executive Session, under 1 VSA 313A1, mediation of... discussion of mediation of litigation.
All right, is there...
VSA.
It's the same statute, right?
Yeah, just section one.
The same as this one?
Except the one.
Okay, gotcha.
All right, is there a motion to amend the agenda as presented by the town manager?
Show move.
All right, motion by Jeff, second.
Second.
Seconded by Rod. All in favor of that?
Aye.
That motion carries. Approval of the minutes from February 23rd.
I'm making a motion to approve the minutes from February 23rd.
I'll second that.
All right, motion by Carol, seconded by Glenn, to approve the minutes from February 23rd. Any corrections needed?
Nope, they look good.
All right, all in favor of that motion?
Aye.
That motion carries. Five minutes for public comment. Is there any public comment?
I'd like to make a comment.
Sure, go ahead.
Okay, so we came up with a name for the dog park. We have a poll online, and by far, the name Fur Haven Dog Park was whenever we liked that. Approved by the board. And there was something else, Joe, we were talking about today. Oh, something about the fence and getting approval from the board or something.
We'll have to... we have to get... we have to bring in quotes and then have the board approve quotes for the fence, yeah.
Should have told me that before. You'll get them tomorrow.
Do you want...
Actually, I sent them to you. Oh, I sent you what? I didn't send you the rest of them.
Do you want to take that up at the next meeting, so we can approve it?
Yeah, when I have everything in front of me.
And I can gather the other quotes and give them to you.
Does that sound fine, everybody?
Sure.
Anything else?
No. We just... so will you decide on the Fur Haven, or is that something that has to be discussed, or...
It's up to the board. How do you want to... do you want to put it under a gender, or you're good with it?
Sounds good to me. Kind of clever, yeah.
Yep. Do you need a motion, or do you...
It would be nice to have a motion.
I'll make the motion that the name for the new Fairhaven Dog Park be Fur Haven.
All right.
Second.
One word or two?
Two words.
It was cute.
Jeff, Glenn. All right, any discussion on naming of the dog park? No? All in favor?
I think I have something.
Yep.
I don't know if it goes with this, but if... we're going to have a sign made, obviously. I think it'd be nice to have a little picture of Murphy down in the corner if this truly is his last year, that we could recognize him that way. So just keep that in mind.
And one other point, we've been doing sponsorships, and we're having metal signs made that are all the same, and they will match the signs going into the large and small dog park. They're green with the green writing and logo. So businesses that are sponsoring, they're paying $250 for sponsorship. The cost of the signs is 50 to 52 per sign, which leaves 200 or so to go into the fund. And so far, we've got 11 businesses, and Murphy has sent out probably 30 requests from businesses, and the response has been really good.
Signs for where?
In the dog park. Like, a lot of them have just, you know, junky white whatever, and none of them match. All of these are going to be matching except for... and it'll go right on the fence around the park.
Eighteen or twenty-four.
Yeah. And that's it.
All right, all in favor of the motion to name the dog park?
Aye.
Aye.
That motion carries, and thank you.
Good. Well, announce it.
Anybody else? Murphy, anybody?
This is naptime.
Department head report? Bill. Go ahead, Bill, you're up. You're muted. There you go.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
All right. Well, in the last two weeks, it's been relatively quiet. I'm working on renewing our MOU of the Child First Advocacy Center, if anybody's familiar with that. It's a countywide MOU with all the agencies to include probation for all in the State Attorney's Office, and they handle all of our complex theft crimes. So I'm in the process of renewing that MOU. I'll put a copy in your box. You guys can renew it. We've had a MOU with them probably for the last five or two years. And they have specialized investigations that handle both types of crimes. Outside, I just have the Highway Safety Grant we'll talk about, but that's on the agenda. I'll see if anybody has anything to me. And welcome to the board members that are new and old. Better come back.
New and old.
Some are moderately old, some are just old.
Anybody have questions for Chief Humphries?
No.
No? All right, thank you, Bill. Anybody else on, or you're good?
No. Roy Eckler did come into the meeting, though.
All right, we'll move on to the town manager report.
We're going to start with DPW right now. DPW was nice enough to give us a list of all their ongoing projects for the new board members, as well as for the rest of us, to remind us what's going on in town. That was distributed. It was on the table in front of you. This week, the DPW, they're moving out of winter and hopefully moving into the spring, spring work. They're doing roadside brush cutting and pothole patching, so if you see them out there, please drive around, be careful. They did have a few spots on our dirt roads where some mud holes did open up. They addressed that pretty quickly to take care of those. And the big green truck, if you were following the drama of that particular vehicle, we finally got that back, and that is up and running. There was a problem with the exhaust. I think you said the exhaust heater, something with the fluid for that, so that's back and going. Water department, everything's running really well up at the water department. They are looking to get their... the north tank painted, and they're getting budget prices for that. We are moving into the budget season for water and sewer. And they're looking forward to getting the rest of the meters installed. They were put on hiatus because of the COVID-19 pandemic. As we move out of that, they'll gear back up and hopefully get the last... I think there's 80 left, about. Sewer, things... there's a lot going on in sewer. The pump stations, both pump stations are being upgraded. We did have a mandatory pre-bid meeting for both the generator and the control panels for those pump stations. Those bids come in at the end of... we open those bids at the end of this month and then early next month. The pump station at Adams Street that did have a pump with a mechanical seal that failed, and they're working to repair that right now. They're getting their spare pump refixed and reinstalled. Moving on to my office. The beam for the firehouse, that is being scheduled for repair, finally. Park lighting and the park and ride project, we did kick that project off on last Wednesday, and we have to have a public hearing April 9th to get resident input and comments and concerns upfront. We will, as the project proceeds, we'll have an alternatives meeting. So the contractor will show us three or four alternatives. The board will choose the favorite. That's still a few months down the road. We did have, sadly enough, we had a request for our old playground equipment. I reached out to the insurance company and to legal, and both said, "No, don't give that stuff up." It's a huge liability to the town, so I wanted to help out, but it's just, we don't want to be any more lawsuit. So I let the young lady know that there was just no way.
So what's going to happen with that equipment? It's going to be destroyed?
Recycled. They said, "Don't give it to homeowners, because some homeowners will want it." So don't give it away. Take it right to the scrapyard. And the board can decide where that money, once that money comes back, where to put them. Baseball signups are underway. That is kind of a... you know, kids aren't on top of each other like football, so we felt it was still... it was okay to do that. It's outdoors, and it fits into our COVID guidelines. Coming down the pike, just as a heads up, electric vehicle charge stations. A company did get a grant from the state of Vermont to install those, and the town of Fairhaven is considered a highly desirable location. These folks will actually pay us, instead of us paying somebody else, so it's a little bit of revenue. I don't know who that company is.
So we have to give them real estate to put them? We have to designate that, or they're going to...
Could swap where they are.
They like, not where the current ones are, but kind of around, you know where the cannon is? There's kind of a little, I don't know what you call it, a little alcove right there. There's... yeah, they just want to drop two stations right there. And they only need the footprint of the EV station.
Will that get in the way of the one-way when we do the south end of the park?
No, it'll be off. It's closer to the park. But there's more to come on that. That's just, I hate to just drop things on you guys.
More to come.
Yeah, there's more to come. There's, I have diagrams and, you know, all kinds of stuff for you. I did get... Mr. Luluk was in. He talked about rats at the Wing property at Fourth and Mechanic. That property is still in the process of being sold. It moved through probate, and they're working that through the system. The town doesn't have his hand... the town does not have their hands on it, but we're keeping tabs, just because that property owes us $8,000 in back taxes, and we're pushing that along. Board of Civil Authority, that packet is... you guys have that packet now. We talked about the mayor. We're also going to apply, while Linda and the mayor are raising funds, we're also going to apply for an AARP grant to help fund the dog park. That's a no cash match, so, I mean, there will be cash, but we don't have to...
What's that for, Joe? Is it for like sidewalks, or...
I'm thinking...
AARP?
Yeah, I'm thinking, they do like just outside things to keep people active. So I'm thinking benches or even trees, bigger trees, to be planted, Toys for Dons, obstacles. Okay, almost done. Still going. Airport Road, still talking about tax sales with that one. That goes up for sale on the 12th, April 12th. That gentleman, he's paid off 75% of what he owes. There's still about $3,500 remaining. He's working hard to get that paid off, though. And appointments, just as a heads up, we're pushing through appointments now. There's a lot to do, but we'll pick at it over the next couple meetings and get that finished up. Oh, no, there's more. I did reach out to... what's it called? Not the Economic Development Committee, the Chamber of Commerce. They would like to know if the board was going to allow the spring fling. Last year, we shut it down. It's coming up May, you know, for Memorial Day.
I was thinking we should, while we're thinking about that, think, decide on the parade as well. It's coming right up.
I don't necessarily need a decision today, but something to keep in the back of your minds, maybe at the next meeting.
Do we put it on the agenda at the next meeting?
Yeah, I think so.
Maybe put both right on there.
Is there any new guidance for outside activities right now that would... could help us?
What is it? You can have 150 people in segregated portions, but you have to be... there has to be some kind of physical barrier. So 150 people here with cone... coned off from those 150 people. Yeah. I don't know if that would work, but we'll put it on the agenda.
Can you forgive it two weeks? I think the governor talked about today a little bit of opening up, so maybe some of that's coming.
That and the vaccinations will make... answering those questions.
They're gaining fast.
And last thing, we have a... this is the first time I've seen this in the last three years. We have a Mr. Beebe that hasn't paid his dump, his bill for the transfer station. Per our policy, we have... he has a month to pay it, or we can shut off his credit. His month is up on the 23rd, so just as a heads up to the board, that's coming up too.
What is his earnings?
Little over 1,000. That's a lot of dump.
So, is he continuing to use the dump station?
His last... yeah, his last use was February, February 1st, so yeah.
Well, I wouldn't consider that. That's over a month ago. How long has he had the credit?
He's been behind since...
No, I mean, how long has he had credit and using?
Years.
Years, okay. So it wasn't just a quick application, and then he built it up and...
Oh, ran out.
You know what? He might have had a job or something.
But that's all I got for you.
You've reached out, though. You started that process.
Yeah, we have. Well, we've sent him a letter just to let him know.
Any other questions for town manager?
Linda has somebody who's going to donate $5,000 to the dog park as soon she gets $5,000 from this other stuff. I don't know if you knew that. Thank you.
There would.
Yeah.
All right, moving on to old business, water and sewer abatement policy review. I think there's some information in your packet about proposals to that.
It was maybe...
Thank you. Mayor H. doing the rips, like, congratulate our new slut boy winners. We're doing a great job, and I know it's going to be good. Thank you for coming. Good night, gentlemen.
So in an attempt to try to codify our process for handling abatements, the last board requested that we go through, the staff go through, find places to edit and improve the ordinance. And in your packet, there is a draft, there's a draft proposal for the board to consider.
And you handed out a background document. That was probably something that, because we asked, what have we done in the past and what have you run into, so that's the background document?
I would be remiss if I didn't bring this up. This is just... this is just a draft. The board, which would actually be, if I could interject my own preference, the board doesn't have to give these sewer abatements. A lot of towns don't. The abatements, I know that people will say that, well, they used water and they didn't use sewer, but this is how we pay our bills. If we're going to have to, as soon as this passes, we're going to start, we're going to have to start tracking the abatements, the official abatements, which will lower the consumption on the sewer side and then push up our per gallon cost. So this is not a free thing to do, just as a heads up. This will cost.
Do we not track the abatements now?
There's no formal way to even abate?
But we've been abating for years for us to turn around and just say, "We're not going to abate." I don't know if I'm ready to take that. I understand what you're saying, but that leap of faith there...
I guess my point is, it was coming. Every time we did an abatement before, it was still coming out of those rates.
Yes.
So it's an unfair statement to say that this is going to make it significantly higher.
I don't know about significant, but if we're going to do it, we have to do it.
Correct.
Yeah, because before it was just kind of hodgepodge, well, my bill was too high, or the board abated this, or this happened, and there wasn't that.
The problem is, there are so many unique circumstances that we cannot even foresee. But the problem that I've seen in the past is that we've allowed an absence of proof. And, you know, there's a general feeling that, well, all I got to do is go in and say, you know, "Pretty please," or whatever, and they'll let me off the hook. And I think there has to be, whatever abatement policy we have, there has to be a very clear requirement for proof. And, you know, one of the problems that I've had in the past is people, they're snowbirds. Either old snowbirds or just newly into it, and they had a leak, and jeez, I didn't have anyone looking after my house. Well, that is not the responsibility of the rest of the ratepayers. You know, we have got to clearly articulate that the homeowner is responsible to have, you know, some means to check in on their, obviously not the sewer, but the water, you know, consumption.
Right. I looked at the draft that you... I, I, I looked at the draft that, that you, that you put out, and I'm saying, cause I was, I was one of the people saying, it seemed like we didn't have a well documented process. I like the process, and it seems to stick to, uh, only getting one abatement, having to show the proof you're talking about, I, I like the verbiage that, that it does, and, uh, and. It even, I believe going forward, even, uh, even more so, we're gonna hear about the outdoor use type of piece. I, I like the, the outdoor water use piece in here that says, okay, if you want that, here's what you need to do. You need to make some investment in that, so.
So I, I talked to Joe a little bit today about, uh, should that second meter cost the same as the first meter? Because is two hundred dollars a year too much to offset any savings that you might have? You'd have to use a lot of water. It was just something to throw out. I, I'm not sure that it is, because it's, uh, it's the larger outside user that would probably take this on. Also, I think board should be select board. Where, where you mentioned board in here?
I can make the change.
There haven't been the complaints this winter that there were through the summer, correct?
The complaints won't come until.
They'll start again.
I'm guessing about September.
But, and we didn't have freeze ups.
Uh, no, yeah, we didn't have any freeze ups.
So people didn't run their wa, like?
Mm-hmm, keep their water going.
So Joe, what are you looking for from the board for?
So if the, if the board, uh, likes the, the verbiage that's in front of them, um, you can make, you can approve this as the language. Uh, the next meeting, we'll have to, we'll have to warn it again, actually have you sign the new, uh, ordinance, and then we have to post in the newspaper after that, saying that changes have been made.
About a forty-five day process to get that?
Uh, thirty day warning? It's, no, it's, you can approve it at the next meeting, it goes in the newspaper, and then there's, what is it, thirty days?
Yeah.
And, and then after thirty days, if there's no petition, it goes in force.
This is changing the ordinance, right?
Yeah. There, there was a, uh, a question about, not to belabor the point, um, there was a question about pool filling, um, and trying to add some verbiage in there about people, uh, kind of fibbing about their readings. Like, if you're, if you're caught with a, we do weekly readings now on all properties. We thought adding some verbiage, saying, you know, if you're, if you're caught with a, caught, caught in a lie, then you're no longer eligible for a pool fill, for, you know, the, the reduced rate. I don't know how the board feels about that.
Well, don't we have the ability to, if, if they had, they have to schedule it with the town, and the town can go out and read their meter at, in the morning, and it, it's gotta be scheduled.
But it doesn't say that in here.
But, I'm, I'm asking if we have that ability.
Yeah, we do.
To take out the, you know, as you said, the fibbing portion. I mean, we, we can reach out without moving out of our desk, I mean, we can just, well, no, someone's gotta go out there, right?
Just gotta drive by.
Just drive by. Okay, so it's just a scheduled drive by?
So I don't, I'm not sure they can get too out of control, cause we are reading once a week. But I, I was the one who brought this up too.
Well, I mean, if you're just topping off your pool, y- you might be talking about a thousand gallons.
Uh, is that, did you?
No, topping off was not a thing.
Just for fill, right?
It's just a full fill.
Yeah, he took topping off out.
Okay. It doesn't, it's really not even, I mean.
It's seven bucks.
Sixty, yeah, seven bucks.
Right.
And, and that's just a, that's a luxury item that they should just absorb.
I was just thinking, if, if it doesn't line, if, if your meter reading that you write down is blatantly different from the weekly reading.
Yeah.
And it doesn't line up, I think maybe you should lose your privilege to, uh, to get pool payments. Or, or, yeah, probably not all abatements, but.
Are you?
I don't believe it's gonna be a problem.
Are you looking to put a, like, on four point zero two outdoor water use, there's a D, abuse of the independent meter, uh, will up for, will lead to immediate removal? Well, do you want something, are you looking for something on the pools, like the same?
Yeah, just simple, yeah.
Abuse, uh, abuse of pool filling will?
Move that up too?
Yeah, I can make that change and bring it.
Thank you.
Yeah, that would be perfect, yeah.
That would, that would work.
Do you think there'd be any abuse in the second, uh, meter? Or would you be able to pick that up in weekly readings? You know, if somebody switched the, back up to the primary?
We would, if somebody switched, yeah, if somebody switched their house meter somehow, like?
Yeah.
We would notice just because, yeah.
One would drop.
Yeah, one would drop significantly, and the other one would spike, so at that point, we would just have to get in and, and inspect the piping.
Uh, that's in here, right, that we can come inspect anytime?
It's, it's.
Just making sure.
Yeah, it's in our, it's in the ordinance, in the overall ordinance.
Yeah, have, you know, saying that is different than.
Actually getting in.
Getting into someone's property.
True.
I mean, if they say, no, I don't want you in here, you, you better have a judge in your pocket.
Yeah.
No, we, we keep a curb key.
Yeah.
And we just turn the water off.
Yeah.
That's a, that's a big.
So you may need to spell that out, is all I'm saying.
Sure.
But, you know, the remedy is, if, if we can't come in to check that, it will be a shut off. I, I don't know if you wanna go that far.
Right, I mean, this is.
I know, I'm sitting here saying, we're trying to write this for the worst case.
Yep.
And I don't want the individual to feel like I'm accusing them of something before they even did it.
I just thought I'd bring it up.
That would.
Bring it up while we're talking about it, cause these things tend to stay for twenty years.
Right, no get.
Or more.
I'll pull together some language, and at the next meeting, I'll.
Put this in, change the numbering, so we look at the ordinance, how the new ordinance would, would look, would be.
Yep, I'm gonna bring the whole, next, next meeting, I'll bring the whole ordinance with these additions.
And you're gonna pop the letter D into?
And put the D in.
Eight point three. Everybody good with that?
Mm-hmm.
Let me see. All right, we've got some more appointments to make here. Um, Emergency Management Coordinator, is there a motion to appoint to that position? And it's currently, currently held by Jim.
It's currently held by Jim.
I'll make a motion, uh, to, uh, appoint Jim Heller as the Emergency Management Coordinator.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Glenn, seconded by Jeff, um, any discussion? And Jim's willing to continue?
Yeah.
Yeah, he does a good job.
All right, all in favor of that?
Aye.
All right, the big one here, fence viewers.
Fence viewer, oh. I'll make a.
Claire, come on.
I'll make a motion, uh, to, to Claire Stanley, be the fence viewer.
All right.
Second.
Is there a?
Mr. Bob Richards would also like to be a fence viewer.
And he, and we can have three persons, so we'll do, uh, Bob Richards as well? Can I do two or? I'll do them with the same fence viewer?
Nah, but. Wasn't on this list.
That's a benign.
Wasn't on this one.
I don't know that two of us can handle this.
What if it's a tie, you might need a third person.
You sure it was Bob and not somebody else?
Yeah, I mean, okay, let me look, maybe I'm trying to get him to do something he didn't wanna do.
I didn't think it was.
It does, he'll take it.
Yeah, he'll take that.
He can do the sound.
Chuckle at it.
Yep.
Wait for it.
It wasn't on.
I got, okay, so I received an email, it's P.S., I would really like to be a fence viewer as well, to Claire.
Perfect.
I'll email.
Then I'll, I'll amend, I'll amend my motion to, uh, I, I, I'll make a motion that we appoint Claire Stanley and Bob Richards as fence viewers.
Second.
When's your first meeting, Claire?
I will, what's that?
When's your first meeting?
I will make him a loaf of bread and thank you.
All right, motion by Glenn, I think it was seconded by Jeff.
Yep.
Um, all in favor of that motion?
Aye.
That passes. The officers for the fire department?
And do I have to do those individually, or can I do them all at once?
I think you could do it as a slate.
Okay, then I'll make a motion for the slate of officers, for Jim Heller as the chief, Tom Fusile as the assistant chief, Don Proctor as the assistant chief.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
All right, Glenn and Jeff again?
If he wants it.
No, no.
You're good?
Yeah.
Okay, all in favor of, uh, that motion?
Aye. Aye.
All right, and one last one.
I thought the constable was an elected official.
Yeah, so there, there's a story behind that one.
Okay.
Um, and the warrant, it should not have been first constable, it should have been second constable. So during the election, the wrong person was elected to that position. So for, it's Don Proctor should have ran, instead Sean Galvin ran, and he's already the second constable. So, sure.
Rather than revoting, we're gonna fix it by appointing?
Yes, so the.
Did you run that by a legal?
The, the town clerk took care of it, yeah. She ran it, but so Sean is not gonna take the first constable position, now there's a position open. The board can appoint this constable.
Oh, okay.
So we, do we need to accept his resignation, cause he was voted in or not, and then appoint?
He didn't accept.
He didn't accept at all?
He didn't accept it, yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
I think that's fine.
So you're, I, I'll make a motion, uh, for, uh, Don Proctor to be the first constable?
Second. I got this.
He got it.
Second. Motion by Glenn, seconded by Rod, that's not, any other questions on that? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Hey, that motion carries?
What about, um, Bob's, is this a place we can talk about those, or?
Next meeting.
Okay.
Are there openings to all the items that he?
I think so.
I'll, I'll resign from planning commission, and that way there he, he'll be.
Isn't there a spot on there anyway? Isn't there a spot on the plane?
I think there was.
I think there was a lady's name that was been there for years though, that we'd have to, oh, get resolved. If I don't resign, so I just, I'll just resign, then there'll be a spot.
Do you wanna put a list together for all those next appointments, Energy Committee, all that?
And who's applying?
Do you wanna put a feeler out again to see who, if there's any more?
Uh, yeah, we, so we advertised in the paper, we did Facebook, and then Bev has been reaching out team companies. So, but yeah, we can blast it out again, just to.
Make people know that this is the time we're doing appointments, so if they have any desire for.
Yeah, he's out there.
It would be nice.
Sure.
Very fond of that, do you want that next meeting? All right, parking lot, I'm not sure how you guys have been doing this in the past, so I'll. Oh, I missed, I'm sorry, I missed, yep. Um, highway safety grant. Bill Onstam?
Yeah, Chief, do you wanna, do you wanna speak to this?
Um, the, the official grant came in, we got, um, a temporary approval to continue operating. Um, due to COVID, the grant was late coming. We have been working the, uh, current grant since October through, um, now. The Sheriff Department sent the grant, they were looking at it back by March twelfth, there wasn't any big changes. So I think there's any changes from previous years of the grant, other than we have to supply a monthly, uh, master payroll sheet. So if somebody got a raise, which we would have done anyways, but they actually want it monthly with the reports that go in. I was looking for, um, a permanent approval to continue working this grant through October, or September thirtieth, this calendar year.
So you need a motion? I'll make a motion to approve the highway safety grant to go through, you said October this year, or September?
September.
The federal municipal year will be September thirtieth, uh, twenty-one.
I'll make a motion to approve the highway safety grant through September thirty-one of this year.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion by Glenn, seconded by Rod, um, discussion on the motion?
And did I hear right, this is the real approval, not the conditional, or the COVID approval?
Right, Bill, I'm pretty sure that's what you.
Yeah, so, um, we had gotten a letter, um, guaranteeing us to get paid from the sheriffs and from the federal government. Um, and had gotten approval from the court board through, um, obtaining the new grant. The new grant came on Friday afternoon of this year, so it's the actual, um, the real grant, we got the real grant numbers. And that would just, again, we were continuing operating, we have been since October, just, we officially have the real grant. The town manager has a copy of it.
Have you been paid, or do we have a big receivable on that?
We just got November, so they started paying.
I'm sure. I'm good.
You're good? Town manager is good with the grant agreement and all that?
Oh, yeah, this was, this agreement is for the chair to sign.
All right, did you want, wait for Carol to come back, or?
Sure, I can take.
Can.
I think there's like, a couple other pages that need to be signed also.
Yeah.
Two, four spots? Possibly.
Yeah, they changed the, they changed the agreements, they're funny now.
Just be a second, Bill, we're waiting on someone.
Okay.
Just to vote.
Just to vote.
You're fine.
They didn't last year.
So we had a motion to approve the grant, and a second, um, any final discussion on that? Any none, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries.
Um, Chris, I just said one thing that I forgot under department head.
Yep, go ahead.
Um, I started actively, actively sending out violations to the, um, tenants in the trailer park. Um, I issued approximately nine tickets, um, last, that went out. On junk ordinance, I'm trying to clean that up.
Yep, okay.
Good.
Joe and Paul, sign this after, I don't wanna sign it in the wrong spot on you. Just, I'll do it after for you.
Yep.
There's a couple, I don't wanna sign it in the wrong spot.
Thanks, Bill.
Yep.
Very good. Thank you.
All right, now moving on to parking lot, I'm not sure how you guys have done this in the past, do you go through each item, or it's just if anybody wants to update on any of the parking lot items?
However you and Joe wanna do it.
Yeah, so we were doing, Bob, the previous chair, just asked, does anybody have questions about the items?
Yeah.
Or updates on that?
Updates, yeah. Um, no, uh, we're working on, so zoning, that's the, the commission, they're, they're down for the count right now, waiting for COVID to wrap up. Downtown designation, I actually did start working on that, I reached out to Chris Howe, uh, for some pro bono legal help. He said, maybe in a few weeks, we'll see how that goes. Um, alley closure, sewer abatement, we're working on resident of the year, not a lot of movement on these right now. We hope to get those moving in the next couple of meetings, though.
The resident of the year, just what we had thought was, um, selecting someone annually that would be, maybe be in the Memorial Day Parade?
Generally from the board.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, we did have someone say they'd hope to be recognized this year.
I'm onto your, your fence viewer.
Claire is the fence viewer, can do it.
I'll walk down with some fence.
There you go.
With us now, as members of PASSIVE and Vermont League of City and Towns, does that get us a little free advice from their attorneys also?
Yes.
Just, just, we weren't there before, uh, when we weren't with PASSIVE, but you might be, I'm just.
And they let you know it when you call.
Oh, but you're not, when you're not, but no, but once you are a member of PASSIVE, then they can, your attorneys can give you some.
We're sorry, but your town is not a member, Jeff, and, uh, this is as far as we can go. I was like, oh, thanks.
On the parking lot, my only other one is, is if there are new members, any questions about any of the items that were there? Like, the tax stabilization is very early, the Economic Development Committee is trying to put something to. The economic development committee is trying to put something together after listening with some new board members. We'll try to get, even to get a better idea of what your thoughts are, what you'd like to see as well.
And I mean, I gotta get in with the town manager and kinda go through some of these things and just get the background knowledge on some of the new projects and some of these items. I don't know if Rod has done that yet. I mean, you were at most of the meetings, so you're in pretty good shape. All right, any other questions or updates on those? Board roundtable? Carol, do you wanna start it?
Um, I had just had these both relate to the annual report. One, I had a thank you note to the board from Judy Gevery for recognizing her mom, and I'll pass that around. It's a nice note. And the other thing, I happened to see Castleton's town report. My personal opinion, I think ours is very stale. We had the same looking, and even the layout inside, it's not appealing to read. Where this one is very, the headers are nice, and when you're talking about new people moving to the area, I would think this would be one of the things they'd be looking for. So I don't know whose ultimate responsibility this is, but I would love to see us spruce up ours for next time around. I'll pass that around. It even feels good. That's all I'm good.
Did you have any for roundtable?
Uh, no, no, I'm fine for now.
Okay, Jeff?
Some more just for Joe, but in the capital budget sheet for the public works vehicles, can you just add a line that tells us what, what the needed? Like, what are we gonna have to come up with, borrow, raise taxes to meet that each year? Or is there enough in reserve to?
No, there's not.
Right, I know there's not.
Um, yes, I'll pull something together.
So that we can see if it's really feasible, or?
That's in the, like, the one-year view. Or would you want it?
Yeah, at least the one year, but I guess I'd kinda like to just see how bad it is out here. And see if we need to push, you know, negotiate things a little bit. I just wanted to be realistic. If, that's the idea of this plan.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea, too.
Glenn, did you have?
No, I'm all set.
Um, review of the financial reports? Got them, Jeff, do you have?
Motion to pay the payroll warrant,
You have a second?
Second.
Uh, motion by Jeff, seconded by Rod for the, authorize the payroll warrants. Any questions on the warrants? No, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that motion carries?
That's about where it's been running.
Right in that area?
Yeah. Motion to pay the general fund warrant, And that includes a truck payment. Payment or purchase?
That's purchase. That's the, that's the full batch.
That's why it's.
That was, the loan came in, the loan went out, and now we have annual payments on that loan for like the next four years.
Okay.
And there are a couple other big items, too, wasn't there?
The quarterly payments were in there, and we bought a big load of salt.
Yeah.
So, yeah, there was a lot.
Okay, so we had a motion by Jeff, seconded by?
Was it seconded? I'll second it.
Seconded by Rod. Further discussion on that? General fund warrants? Oh, all right, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that motion carries?
And there's $259,577.94 in the checkbook.
All right, the last item. Is there a motion to go into executive session?
Sure, I'll make a motion to go into executive session for mediation of litigation. One VSA, 3391.
Mediation of what?
Uh, mediation of litigation.
Of litigation.
All right, motion by Glenn, seconded by Carol. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that motion carries.